The meeting of the City of Falls Church City Council on Monday, February 11th, 2013. If you please rise and pledge allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Kathy Feud, please call the roll.
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Kalin.
Here.
Mr. Pepe.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Tarter.
Here.
Mayor Baruch.
Here.
Thank you, council.
Council, I propose that we make one change to the agenda after talking with the city manager. We do not, or I'm sorry, the city attorney, we do not need the closed session this evening, which is item 14. If I can get a motion as I proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the amended agenda.
If I can get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the agenda is adopted as amended. I don't believe we have any proclamations this evening. Are there any boards or new boards and commission members here to be sworn in? I believe Mr. Dan Z is here to be sworn in. Mr. Z.
Hello, Mr. Z. Nice to see you again.
I'm here, Zollman.
I know. If you will raise your right hand. Stand up to me, please. That's where you're at. I, Daniel Z, do solemnly swear.
I, Daniel Z, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
According to the best of my abilities, I help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, I help me God.
Thanks. Stay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, we are on to receipt of public comments. We have first on the list, the annual report for the ESC. So I believe Tim is going to be giving that report. Tim, welcome.
Mayor Baruch and council, the ESC has submitted its 2012 annual report, which I would like to briefly summarize. As you know, the ESC is your volunteer citizens advisory committee on matters affecting the environment in our city. We currently have seven knowledgeable residences members who have concern over the environment here in Falls Church. The ESC has benefited significantly during 2012 from the efforts of our city staff liaison, Allison Lorenz, and also the skill and guidance of other members of staff, including Brenda Creel, Bill Hicks, and Jason Widström. We would especially like to express thanks for the support provided by our city council liaison, council member Berry. The key items in the report are as follows. The ESC was instrumental in assisting council in adopting an initial green buildings policy. We urged specification of a policy that would be known upfront to developers of new projects, and that reliance on qualified third-party expertise was the best way to ensure the correct installation and functioning of complex energy efficiency and environmental health and safety design features. The city proposed, and we supported, adoption of LEED silver for new municipal buildings and major renovations. While the language adopting this policy was softened somewhat during the process leading up to the final council vote in September, we nonetheless think the council's policy provides a strong foundation for environmentally responsible code requirements for all sectors of the built environment in our city. And by the way, in 2012, Virginia was the top state for new LEED certifications. The ESC proposed two items of state legislation for the city's legislative program for the 2013 State General Assembly. The ability to regulate consumer disposable bags, and clarification of a customer's right to enter into power purchase agreements with contractors who provide renewable energy systems. We appreciated the council's decision to include both of our recommendations in its legislative program. In the General Assembly still in session, legislation was introduced on both of the items introduced by the ESC. On a personal note, I had the privilege of reviewing sixth grade science presentations at Mary Ellen Henderson several weeks ago. One of the students' presentation was on renewable energy, and highlighted the advantages of companies who allow customers the ability to avoid the steep upfront cost of rooftop solar systems by, in effect, entering power purchase agreements. I had to alert them that unfortunately, in Virginia, such agreements are still not allowed, but that our city council supports legislation to make them possible. The ESC has actively contributed to the development of the city's watershed implementation plan. Our focus has been on the need to educate our residents on how stormwater running off of our properties affects the health of the Chesapeake Bay. And we have urged both council and staff to incorporate incentives for our residents to improve the infiltration of stormwater on their properties through the use of rain barrels, rain gardens, and other similar techniques. We also pointed out that these efforts can help the city by reducing its expenditures needed for infrastructure to support the TMDL obligations. We toured facilities used by the city to treat our wastewater, incinerate our municipal solid waste, and process our curbside recycling. As a result, we made suggestions on improving the recycling of our plastic bags and validated efforts to conserve groundwater. We shared the results of tours with the community through an op-ed in the Falls Church News Press. Our members provided comments to council on initiatives such as the pedestrian and bicycle plan, the North Washington Street Small Area Plan, and we supported the George Mason High School students who explored interest in the transition movement in our city. We continued our traditional interest in monitoring and facilitating recycling in our city. Although we slipped to the number-two position in statewide ranking, we accept the challenge of regaining our leadership position. We began activity to support the city's efforts to become the first EPA green power community in Virginia by hosting speakers from Three Degrees, by publicizing the year-long challenge effort in local media, and volunteering at the community challenge tent at last year's fall festival. Finally, and by no means least, the ESC structure includes several subcommittees that provide our residents worthwhile opportunities to volunteer their time and their labor to benefit our environment. Melissa Teetz chairs the Habitat Restoration Subcommittee. They conducted six invasive species removal events and a native plant sale. Ralph Wiatzko chairs the Energy Efficiency Climate Change Subcommittee. They conduct our greenhouse gas inventory and promote energy efficiency. Sarah Beldon chairs the Education Subcommittee. They conduct Operation Earthwatch in our schools. And Allison Lorenz chairs the Cleanup Subcommittee. They coordinate various cleanup events throughout the year. 2012 was indeed an active year for the ESC, and in looking forward, we welcome opportunities to provide input to all of you. That includes our report, and I'd welcome any comments or questions that you might have.
Don't you, council, any questions? Ms. Berry.
I simply had a comment. I wanted to thank Mr. Stevens, and it is a privilege to be associated with the ESC and the tremendous volunteers that comprise not only the ESC but all the various subcommittees. I just wanted to echo Mr. Stevens' report regarding the ESC's work and reiterate the very glad news that Virginia has now become number-one in, at least according to the U.S. Green Building Council, surpassing all the other states as the top LEED-certified building initiative. It was interesting, because the press release from the governor's office indicated that it was part of the governor's plan, I don't know if you remember this, Tim, to, it was part of the governor's design, he wrote, "to make Virginia the energy capital of the United States." Now, what I'm hoping he meant was sustainable and renewable energy capital, but it was good news nonetheless. So, thank you, and thank you, your colleagues, for all their important work.
Thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan?
Just one. Great work. Love it. All the stuff you do. Slipped to number-two in recycling. What jurisdiction is number-one? I should know that, but I don't.
It's a small suburb of Roanoke.
Oh, really?
Statistically wound up in first place, and we congratulate them. We'll take it on as a challenge.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Other council members?
Thank you very much.
I have several speaker slips for items on the agenda. I'm happy to take those comments now or when we get to those agenda items. So if there's any comments that you'd like to provide now, please step forward, and we'll take the comments now or at a later point. Okay, not seeing any. Ms. Pashaw, would you summarize the written comments we've received?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, you have two letters here that you've received through email, and you've seen them already. Mr. Eric Pellton at 3 North Oak Street has urged the council to reduce the expenditure for the playground equipment at Lincoln Park, which is one of your consent items, and to seek to recover replacement costs from the driver's insurance company for the damages that occurred there. Mark Hay has expressed his concerns about the school board's budget and the impact on homeowners. He's asked the council to hold down tax increases for homeowners. And those are the two letters you received since the last meeting.
Thank you very much. We are on to council requests. Council, any requests at this point? We are on to the report of the city manager to council. Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. Just a few things to report on. We are still in the midst of our sewer lining work, and this is work that is ongoing at a number of streets throughout the city. Every place where we are doing our sewer lining work, we have sent out notices to all the residences on the street. It is work that we typically do at night, because it's important to do it while the flows through the sewer system are at the minimum. And so for those areas where we are doing this work, now we have about 5,000 linear feet of work that we're doing this winter. Those residents might experience a little bit of loud noise from the pumps and the work that's done, but nighttime is the best and the safest time to do that work. The overall purpose of that work, of course, is to keep stormwater inflows out of our sanitary sewer system, and that protects everybody throughout the system for backflows in their basements, and also avoids the city's cost of having to treat stormwater as it goes through the sewer system. So it's important work through the Sewer Capital Improvement Program, and is ongoing throughout this week, and we should be wrapping up by the end of this week for this year's work. Secondly, I just want to give a plug out to the Original House of Pancakes. On February 21st, they will be donating 15 percent of their gross receipts to the Mary Riley Stiles Library. And they've done this every year for many years, and they've kept the tradition on at their new location at 7395 Lee Highway. So I encourage everyone on February 21st to go out to the Original House of Pancakes, get a stack of pancakes, and stack up donations for books, DVDs, audiobooks at the Mary Riley Stiles Library. Lastly, with respect to the budget calendar, we did put out a notice today of just trying to promote the budget calendar so people understand the key times where information will be presented and when we'll be seeking input on our budget. A couple of key dates, the budget will be presented to the council on March 11th, and then from there, we have a whole series of public hearings and town hall meetings. And just to note a few of them, we'll have a town hall meeting on Saturday, March 16th, at 10:00 a.m. in the Community Center, and we'll also have a town hall meeting on Saturday, April 13th, at 10:00 a.m. in the Community Center. One key date to note, that first reading of the budget ordinance and the tax rate ordinance will be on Wednesday, March 27th, and that is a change from the original published calendar, which was for Monday. We will not have that meeting on Monday night in observance of Passover. And so that meeting night will be on Wednesday. We also recently mailed out our assessment notices, and so everyone should be getting their assessment notices this week. There's a lot of useful information with those assessment notices about what, how the assessment process is conducted in the City of Falls Church, what homeowners' rights are. But we also provide in the assessment notices a budget calendar, and those assessment notices were printed, and the envelopes were stuffed before. I got to the assessor to inform them of the change of the date to this Wednesday, the 27th. So the assessment notices still have that old Monday date, so we will have, make, redouble our efforts to make sure that the public is aware of that date change. So those are just three things to report on tonight, and be happy to answer any questions.
Shields, any questions for Mr. Shields, council?
Thank you.
We are on to business on the agenda. Ms. Pashaw, if you'd read the first item.
Yes, council, the first one, and before you is a second reading of ordinance TO 13-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, Article 4, Districts Division 15, HCC, Historic and Cultural Conservation District of the City Code to create Section 48-801, Decertification of Properties, listed on the City of Falls Church Official Register of Protected Structures and Sites Official Register, and Section 48-802, Register of Protected Structures and Sites Official Register.
And Mayor Baruch, members of council. Council referred this ordinance out on the 14th of January for boards and commissions, and our planning specialist, Deborah G., will give a report on what we heard from our boards and commissions and from the public, and this item is up for final adoption and second reading tonight.
Thank you. You have in your package attachments five and six. They are the comments from the Historical Commission and from the Planning Commission. Both boards recommend support of this ordinance. They realize that it's not, was not envisioned when we first adopted the ordinance, but circumstances have changed, and that there are some properties within the city that are currently designated that have lost their historic integrity. So we would ask that you would move to adopt this ordinance this evening.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? Ms. G.
How the process works. In other words, who goes to whom? Does the individual property owner come and say, "I want my house to be historically designated," or does the city come to them? And what rights does someone have to say, "Hey, you know what? I really don't want my property designated in this fashion"? The process is outlined within the ordinance, where the property owner or their representative would make an application, pay a miscellaneous planning fee. That application would be reviewed by the Historical Commission, and then the Historical Commission's recommendation would go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would review the application, make a recommendation to council. If council and the Planning Commission did not agree, then the city council would have to have a supermajority vote to overrule the Planning Commission. But these six property owners that are listed within the staff report that were identified by the Traceries Report, we will be contacting those individuals and asking them if they are interested in pursuing this.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Comments? Okay, thanks very much. Let's open this to public comment, please. We have at least one speaker slip, and Cynthia Garner.
Good evening, well, the mayor, as soon as he comes back, and members of the council. Thank you. My name is Cynthia Garner. I live at 219 East Columbia Street. That's plaque number 66 on the official register. I come before you tonight, and I apologize that it's taken me a month to focus on this. Just got the documents this weekend. I come before you tonight to urge you not to adopt, in its present form, the proposed amendment to the HCC ordinance for several reasons. One, the process of ordinance amendment must be completed before the council considers individual cases of decertification. Two, the ordinance needs more work to clearly and carefully set standards for decertification, which after all, would apply to all 106 structures in the city. Three, if adopted as drafted and with a staff memo in support, the ordinance would have the unintended consequence of opening up a large number of structures on the official register for decertification, thus undermining the goals of the HCC ordinance. I commend the council's historic consultant, Traceries, for suggesting there may be certain circumstances in which decertification should be considered for a structure on the register. I agree wholeheartedly with the governmental bodies that have looked at this question, that these circumstances should be rare, require clear evidence, and should support the goal of the long-term preservation of historic structures in the community and the legitimate, the legislative balance which already exists. I believe that the amendment as drafted may be a good beginning, but it still needs substantive work before it can function correctly, clearly, and in the rarest of circumstances. As a result, I urge the council not to take final action tonight. Given the time constraints of the three-minute limit, I ask that my comments be entered as part of the record, and you've been provided written copies of them. I'm only going to provide highlights orally. The council's action on adopting an amendment should not be tied in any way to the potential case for decertifying any particular property on the register. The ordinance's third whereas clause refers to the recommendations on decertifying six properties which are identified by address. As a consequence, the legislative history of this amendment is infused with the focus on six particular structures out of the 106 of the register. This raises the inference that these properties should in fact be decertified. It prejudges the decertification request, and prejudging compromises the objective decision-making process of the council. I appreciate that the shared goals of the council, the Planning Commission, and the Historical Commission is to provide a narrow carve-out of rare, particular circumstances under which a decertification would be appropriate, in essence, once a historic structure has been destroyed, in other words, when there's no there there. My overarching concern is that the proposed language is too broad and creates an exception when coupled with the Traceries Report that will gut the official register of structures. I have a number of in particular questions listed that I don't have time to do for you, so I refer you to my written comments. I believe the council should adopt a definition which expressly excludes owner addition and alterations as a cause of decertifying. This is perhaps my largest concern in citing the Traceries Report for this proposed amendment. Throughout it, the facts that are listed in the Traceries Report indicates it's not an act of God destruction of a structure, it's additions or alterations. And that is a huge, it's a huge loophole, and I'm sure an unintended consequence, and maybe we should talk about that. Maybe there are circumstances for it, but I don't believe the ordinance amendment is ready tonight for second reading. Thank you very much for your time.
Counsel, any comments before we take up a motion? Questions or comments either?
Mayor, if I could?
Yep, please.
I would be interested in staff's response to some of these important issues. I can't speak to the, a number of the specific issues that were raised. Frankly, that's on my expertise, but I am familiar with one point that I think is important, and that is, it's really not a good idea to mix a policy change and a specific action. In my previous work, we would never change a financial policy because there was a loan that was coming up, and we needed to change the policy in order for that loan to go forward. So we always do, we would always make a policy change unrelated to a specific action that would follow to that policy change. That procedural thing, which is unlikely to get into, I think has merit and should be considered.
Shields, do you have a response?
The, I will note just a few things. I think it might be helpful to get our planning staff's perspective on these comments as Broadly speaking, our intent was to have a narrow carve-out for a situation where there's been an act of God that has made it so a property no longer contributes to the historical character of the city, or no longer is in line with what the city's goals are through its ordinances. And so that is the intent of the ordinance, and that's explicitly stated in the intent section of Section B. In terms of the specific reference to the property at 115 East Jefferson Street, I think that's noted in the staff report simply as context. The request came in, there is no historic integrity pursuant to the Historical Commission's own investigations into it, but we don't have a process in our ordinance to deal with that. And so, given that situation, that prompted the need to have a process. I think in reviewing the history of this, it does appear that there have been properties that have been decertified in the history since the 1980s, when we established the official record. Without second-guessing, that decision-making process, which happened in some cases 10-plus years ago, in any event, it was our view that we ought to have a legitimate process for doing it. It ought to be laid out in the city code very carefully, so that there's not an erosion of the historic ordinance, and we thought that this ordinance did that. And so that's a broad statement on it, and if there are further questions on it, I've got Jim Snyder here could speak to it as well.
Mr. Mayor. When this topic first came up, I was concerned about exactly the comments that Ms. Garner made, and I'm frankly surprised that there's a reference to more than a property that was totally destroyed by fire, because my indication was that the intention was total destruction of the property by fire or other act of God, which is what the ordinance apparently says. And yet, there's this reference to six other properties. Frankly, Ms. Garner is absolutely right. It creates the impression that these other properties are suitable for decertification. So one of the things I'm going to ask for, if this ordinance goes forward, well, there are a couple things, but one of the things I'm going to ask for is that all reference to the Traceries Report and all specific properties be deleted, and that the ordinance stand on its own, written as it is. I think we need to be very clear that we're not opening a major gap here in our historic ordinance, which is already not the strongest ordinance around. And then there are certain other aspects that we'll deal with in a minute. I also would suggest that if we move this ordinance tonight, that we take Ms. Garner's comments in mind, and we start an amending process to sharpen it. So, but I realize that there's some interest on the part of at least one property owner to move rapidly, and so I want to do that, but at the same time, I'm not about to open a gap in the city's historic ordinance. So my suggestion going forward would be that we, well, should, would it be appropriate to make a motion at this point, and we can discuss it further?
Let's see if any other council members have any comments before we take a motion. Mr. Snyder, if you want to make your motion.
Okay, I would move approval of TO 13-01, including the deletion of all reference to the Traceries Report, and that we have, within two weeks, additional amendatory language to deal with Ms. Garner's comments. That way, we can move rapidly to deal with a situation, but at the same time, we take a serious look at Ms. Garner's comments. And that it be clear that what we're enacting tonight is the ordinance and not the staff report, that should have the deletion of anything regarding the Traceries Report.
Can I get a second, please?
I second it.
Ms. Berry, I'm the second. And Vice Mayor Snyder, did you already open this up for public comment? Close it to public comment?
We had one comment, but you may want to open it.
Yeah, let me open this item up again for public comment. Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Ms. Pashaw, I don't believe that we received any written comments on this. Counsel, any questions on this? Or, I'm sorry, any comments before we take the vote?
I mean, I guess I would say, if we're intending to amend it immediately, we ought to just, I would recommend hold off and put in whatever we want to change right now. I mean, I presume that once we adopt the ordinance, whoever might want to take advantage of it as it exists then could go ahead and file immediately, so it sort of seems to me there's really not much purpose in adopting if we're going to seek to amend it two weeks from now. I would just recommend deferring this so that we can get it right and approve it at that time.
And that's quite right, but my only concern is that they- to just, I would recommend hold off and put in whatever we want to change right now. I mean, I presume that once we adopt the ordinance, whoever might want to take advantage of it as it exists then could go ahead and file immediately, so it sort of seems to me there's really not much purpose in adopting it if we're going to seek to amend it two weeks from now. I would just recommend deferring this so that we can get it right and approve it at that time.
And that's quite right, but my only concern is that there is at least one property owner who's been working on this issue for, and in the spirit of total disclosure, it's my next-door neighbor, in the spirit of total disclosure. Cindy is also my neighbor, in the spirit of total disclosure.
It's small.
Yeah, it's a small city. Everybody else is, you know, practically everybody on this list is my neighbor. And that just that this has been going on in this one particular case since April of 2011, so I'm mindful of certain property owners need to move forward. I am also mindful and very respectful of the scholarship that Cindy has put forward, and that we need to be careful about separating the specific from making sure that the specific does not define the broad. So that's just my concern, is that two weeks may be problematic for a particular property owner that's been waiting now for a year and a half.
Council members?
I guess my
Mr. Pepe?
My concern with that would be if indeed we're trying to step back in not being specific to particular individuals, but to do the policy correctly, we shouldn't rush and do something just because one person needs it. I mean, I'm always worried of legislation, particularly when it involves zoning or historical things, that you adopt because one person is pushing it. That's my only concern. I don't know, Dave has more experience with this, but my experience is when you open a loophole even for a couple of weeks, folks who need to take advantage of it are going to jump on it and take advantage of it, and then you've got a process that's tied up in the middle of it, that you're then trying to amend something while you've got cases peeling, and you end up with a real mess.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan, were you, I couldn't tell if you were going to make a comment or not.
You know, not a lawyer, and although I live in a house that's old, and it's certainly not historic, so this is not my area, but, I mean, the concerns that you express are ones that I would, I guess, share. I mean, we heard this at work session at least once, twice maybe, and none of this kind of came out, so I hadn't anticipated that it was going to be such a significant matter of dispute. I guess I would, you know, ask the city attorney for his opinion about the comment that Mr. Pepe and Mr. Carter are alluding to. If we pass something and administratively amend it, are we getting ourselves into some sort of situation that we should not get into, or would be desirable not to get into? If we could wait another meeting and work out these things, it sounds like we're going to need to go back to fairly serious square one on it.
I mean, there's really two ways that the council can proceed. The first is, is I think the vice mayor has moved to strike the Traceries references and then go ahead and vote to adopt what's before you this evening with that amendment. The other way to proceed would be to just defer to a date certain, I think as Mr. Carter mentioned, and to just take up all of the amendments that are discussed this evening at that time. One thing we need to be cognizant of, however, is that if the changes are substantial at the deferral date, that may require going back to a new first reading, which would add further delay, and it really depends on what the changes are. The changes that are proposed by the vice mayor this evening, simply striking the Traceries references and the whereas, are not substantive changes and could go ahead and be made tonight. You know, with respect to Mr. Pepe's concern about an ordinance that's directed towards a specific issue, I understand what he's saying. I think that the problem here is that this is really the only way to address the problem that particular property owner finds himself in, and that without this ordinance, it doesn't seem like he's going to be able to, you know, move forward with a sale and redevelopment of that property, as I understand it. And the language, I think, is crafted in such a way that it's not just specific to him, but it does address, I think, at least a larger, long-term problem, and that is, you know, what do we do in those instances where a historic property is destroyed by fire or other act of God? Anyway, that's my read on it. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
I don't know, Mr. Snyder?
Also, I might comment. I think in actually looking at the ordinance itself, as it's been amended and tweaked by the advice from the council, Planning Commission, and Historic Commission, it does specifically talk about fire and act of God. The references to the Tracer report are in here, I think, in many ways, just to give you background on, there was a study done by a group, but we had a grant to look at this, so it's background. I think it would be fairly simple to strike the whereases and the references to it, and have a whereas from the council, that you would be looking at any future property on its own merits, and the standards in the ordinance, that it be a result of a fire or an act of God are the ones that you'd be looking at. We provided this really to give background, because this has been going on for a long time, but actually reading the ordinance language itself, it is very specific, and this is in great part because of the input from council and Planning Commission and others, that it does have those standards of a fire or an act of God. So the notion that a house has been made less historic by virtue of additions would not qualify under these standards. So the Traceries piece is really here to give you background, how we got here. This has been an outstanding issue for a number of years, and we felt that was important. Perhaps it's overemphasized here, and I think it's certainly within council's purview to strike that and make it clear in your adoption that you would be looking at the standards in the ordinance, and each, any future proposal would have to stand on its own merits per the standards of the ordinance.
Other council member comments before we take a vote on this?
And I would also like to, I agree with Mr. Duncan, and I'm surprised that, I thought we sort of, we had gone through the needful process. I mean, Ms. Garner's comments are absolutely, you know, integral to this, but we've gone through this process, and we've had excellent advice from a number of quarters, and I think Mr. Snyder in particular has been extremely mindful about the integrity of a historic designation and making certain that we are not, we don't enter into this lightly. To Mr. Pepe's point, again, I agree, you're quite right that, you know, we talked about the specific not defining the broad, but as Mr. Shields said, this particular case has prompted action where there had been no process in the past, and I think that's the critical piece here, is that this may have been the impetus for putting together a process that didn't exist and may be important to the city in the long run. So this actually sort of codifies and puts corners around what was amorphous, or in this particular case, nonexistent, protocol.
Other council members? I can have the roll call vote, please.
We're voting on the amended.
Yeah, that's what's on the table, is the amended, or Vice Mayor Snyder's motion, which was to amend, to delete the references to the report, and then also ask staff to review the comments that we received this evening and make any adjustments within two weeks.
And to approve the ordinance.
And to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so let me get this, so I will be amending TO 13-01 by striking the lines 148 through 154, is that correct? Is that what you'd like? Those two whereas clauses, you want those taken out completely?
Yes, and then also strike references to the Traceries report and the staff report, lines 76 through 100, and lines 32 through 47.
36 through 47, strike Traceries.
32 through 47.
Oh, 32 through 47, strike.
76 through 100, and 148 through 154.
Got it. But specifically, 148 through 154, that language is completely being struck in the staff report, is all of that going to be removed?
Yes.
Not just reference to Traceries?
Yep.
All that language, okay.
Can we clarify, there's also an intention here, I don't know how you put this in the motion, Mr. Snyder stated something about looking at some of these other issues immediately.
I think that was part of the motion.
Well, no, it's not really, because the actual motion is what's written here with those changes, unless we added.
I understood that Mr. Snyder added that, so perhaps Mr. Snyder wants to clarify that again.
Let me go again.
Would you like me to?
I move.
Read back to what I have. Mr. Snyder moves, seconded by Ms. Berry. Approval of TO 13-01 with deletion of all reference of the Traceries report. So instead of that, we could put with deletion of, and then I could have the lines in the staff report and in the ordinance, and then add, and within two weeks have amending language to do with Ms. Gardner's comments. Did you want to have that as the other part of it?
Sure.
No. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we going to open this up to council comments again? All right, Mr. Kalin.
I'm prepared to vote, and I understand there are extenuating circumstances for this, but as a matter of course, drafting at the table is something I think is profoundly bad idea, and while we're going on it today, I would prefer never to see anything drafted at the table. This is prescription for mistakes.
Ms. Bishow, if you would call the roll.
One moment.
I have to say, this is
Would you like me to read it one more time? I think I have it.
Unless a council member is asking for it, I think we can just
Ah, yeah.
Okay.
Less know the better here.
All right, then I'm going to call the roll.
I don't know what's going on.
All right, I'm calling the roll on second reading for final passage of TO 13-01. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Okay.
All righty. Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And Mayor Burden?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. All right, counsel, the next sign before you is TR 12-31, Resolution to Adopt the 2013 Affordable Housing Policy. This was referred on November 26, 2012, to boards and commissions, Falls Church School Board, Economic Development Authority, Greater Falls Church Chamber of Commerce and Village Preservation, and Improvement Society for Comment. And then there was a published public comment period between November 27, 2012, through January 26, 2013.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, provide the staff report.
Counsel, I'll just provide a brief staff report. This has been discussed extensively at work session. The resolution that's before the council and the draft policy for affordable housing reflects the discussion at work session last week, and those changes are as follows. At line 15, there's an added definition of affordable housing, which includes workforce housing. That came out of the public comment process and was recommended by the task force and staff. Second, at line 55 and line 56, the text is amended, as shown in the draft Affordable Housing Policy, that is in your packets and before the council. And then at line 70, pursuant to a request at the work session, there was added a specific date for receipt of the annual report, and so that is added at line 70. I did want to just note that during the council work session discussion, there was discussion of the policy statement at lines 31 through 34, but there are no changes to that language in the policy. The language that's before the council is the language that was referred out to boards and commissions when the council acted on November 26. Lastly, I would just note that Councilmember Duncan has circulated a revised version. That's been posted on Granicus, and copies have been made available to the council. So a brief staff report. Staff is here to answer any questions, and thank you.
So here's what I propose that we do. Let's see if there's any questions for staff, and then I want to give Mr. Duncan an opportunity to talk about his proposed edits. Counsel, any questions for staff? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could take just about three minutes to lay out what I circulated earlier today and has been posted. Citizens in council have discussed this issue extensively, and we know there are some strong differences of opinion in the citizenry and on council about how to preserve and create affordable housing, a strategy of scattered site or dedicated building, city-focused or regional approach. Despite lengthy substantive and passionate debate on strategy, I am not seeing minds changing on that question, not among those of us currently involved in the debate. So it's my hope that we can try to start building on what we do agree on. It may not be possible to satisfy every need or desire for affordable housing, but I believe there is a council majority and substantial community support for preserving and creating housing opportunities for our senior citizens who wish to age in place, for our teachers, public safety officers, and other city and schools employees, for folks in our private sector workforce, and yes, even for our low-income families and people with disabilities and other special needs. At last Monday's council work session, the mayor suggested that I have further conversations on the housing policy with Vice Mayor Dave Snyder. I did so, and as a result, I'm offering revised language in the opening section of the policy under statement of core principles and intents. My proposed revision, while I expect, look quite minor. It just takes two sentences and moves them intact from line 30 to line 47. That's it. But I do see it as an important revision, because its effect is to give more prominence in the policy to the people that we want to help, not only low income, but also workforce, aged play seniors, and others with need. I hope my proposal might enable us all tonight to cast a vote in support of affordable housing and not pointlessly fight past battles that reopen old wounds. If I could speak just for a second more on the rest of the policy. As I noted earlier, I support the rest of the language in the policy document as it is presented to us, including the language at line 56 that says the city council should consider dedicating sustainable annual revenue to the Affordable Housing Fund, and the language at line 70 mandating that the City of Falls Church Department of Human Services will submit an annual report by January 1st to city council detailing the current status of affordable housing and the effectiveness of this policy in creating additional affordable housing solutions. I ask, I guess, for a second for my thoughts, and ask for support for my proposed rearrangement of language, which I offer in a spirit of hopefulness that tonight we might speak as one to advance the cause of affordable housing. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, thank you, Phil, for your edits on this. I anticipate that one question that's going to come up is, you know, with the move of the language, what the effects could be. And again, I know that we're all seeing this for the first time this evening, perhaps, or earlier in the day. One suggestion I would have on your revised draft on line 56 is doing a hard return there, so that's a separate standalone paragraph.
Yeah, that's fine, that's the way that I
And I think that was the intent.
Yes, that is the intent.
So adding a hard return, and just to clarify, that that language that's in the highlight there, which is line 56 through 58, is intended to apply both to the priority for preserving the existing committed affordable housing stock, and also for creating additional affordable housing stock. Just so that is clear, that line read with the words inserted, "and preserving," so it would read, "it is important to consider all options for increasing and preserving the supply of affordable housing." So that makes it doubly clear that that concept is to apply to both the first priority and the second priority. That's fine.
I'll have a second, then. Councilmember Duncan's proposed amendment for discussion.
As amended?
As amended.
All right. Can I, and, Mr. Duncan, I take it that you were acceptable to what I had proposed?
Yes, what you said is fine. It's exactly fine, but I meant I just hadn't thought about that, but that's
Okay, so we've got a proper motion, so what I want to do is provide counsel an opportunity for any questions, and then we'll go ahead and open it up. we'll go ahead and open it up. So let me, since I actually wrote this down. So there would be a hard return after line 54. So it would be a separate paragraph with what's in the highlight, which begins with, "It is important to consider all options."
But there's the motion itself.
I'm sorry.
There is a motion that we don't have yet.
No, Mr. Duncan made a motion, and before it was seconded, he accepted a change.
Yes.
So that's the motion.
You guys are doing a great job. Just keep it up.
No, I think Mr. Duncan moved it.
A motion by Mr. Duncan, and, Nate, do you have the line seconded by Mr. Snyder?
There needs to be a formal, "I move..."
I move TR-12-31. Yeah, I don't think anybody's...
So, Mr. Duncan, if you would please read off your script.
Moved it up.
Mr. Duncan just needs to put in those extra words in the hard return and read that one.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Moved it up. TR-12-31, as revised? As presented?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it sounds like we've, just, I know that we're working with limited technology this evening, which shows us how dependent we've become on Granicus. Kathy, did we actually get the edits as well?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, why don't we go ahead and take council comments, and then I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment if there's any questions. Yeah, are there any questions before we take public comment? Let me go ahead and open this item up for public comment. Why don't we take questions first and then open it up for public comment, which we normally do.
That one is more important than the other, or is it just naming here are the two?
Mr. Duncan?
This is addressed, this is the language that was in the underlying papers that were sent out to us, so, yes, the latter. It's just one and two. It's not, one is more important than the other.
All right, I do have a request from Kathy, or from the council, excuse me. I would like the answers to these questions to be attached, you know, to this document for legislative history purposes, because no one remembers how things are supposed to be interpreted, and it's important to understand that the intent is now included in the policy, because that's not stated here, and I like that to make sure that Mr. Duncan's agreement with interpretation is reflected in the minutes and attached to the, attached to this document.
What was that? I'm sorry, Mr. Pepe.
Well, I have followed...
Well, history's nice, but it's nice to be certain and specific in your legislation. So if that's the intent of council, the line that now says two priorities have been identified, you can say two equal priorities have been identified. That's all you'd have to say.
I was only trying to follow what I said before about minimizing the number of changes at the table and drafting it at the table. That was the only reason why I did it that way.
But adding a whole lot of extra legislative histories, even more changes than adding one word.
No, it isn't. That's not true.
Well, I, we can see where folks are at with that change, but I think what made work here is just having it clear in the minutes, and I think their minutes are clear.
My legislative intent is for those to be two equal priorities, if that answers Iris' question.
All right, any other questions? All right, why don't we go ahead and open this item up for public comment? The first speaker slip I have is Mr. Novak. Mr. Novak, you have three minutes, and if you'd state your address for the record as well.
For the record, my name is Ed Novak. I'm president of Nova Habitat, a real estate development company based in Chevy Chase, Maryland. We were co-developers of the Broadway, developers of the Byron. I'm also a limited owner of Matt Fox Brewing Company. I served on the Affordable Housing Policy Task Force. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Dana Lewin and Nancy Vincent for including me. I'd like to congratulate co-chairs Craig Chaney and Don Brobst for their masterful leadership and diplomacy during some rather challenging discussions, and I'd like to express my appreciation for my fellow task force members. When we first met as a group, I indicated that there were two fundamental principles that I personally thought important to the long-term success of an affordable housing program in Falls Church. First, that the underlying theme of the policy should be one of opportunity and not entitlement. It is impossible for the city to satisfy every need or desire for affordable housing in the region, but focusing resources that are aimed at providing supportive and uplifting opportunities is likely to garnish the most citizen and taxpayer support and result in the greatest good. Second, was that the program should be a partnership in all respects, a partnership between the city and developers, a partnership between those that provide the financial support for affordable housing and those that receive the benefits. I understand that the city is facing significant budget constraints. I would not propose a financial commitment by the city council towards affordable housing that resulted in a trade-off of not being able to provide essential services in a period of austerity. However, I do think that affordable housing is deemed important for the health and future of Falls Church, that the city should show its financial support side by side with developers. The document you have before you is really a policy framework. The real test of success will be in its interpretation and implementation. I hope that in the future, I can point to Falls Church as an example of an affordable housing program that is regionally recognized as a successful partnership that benefits all of the stakeholders in this wonderful city. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Novak. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Donald Brusso.
My name is Ronald Brusso, and I live at 607 Northwest Street. I'd like to ditto Ed Novak's comments on the task force, its leadership, and the product it produce. I recommend that the city council not approve the proposed affordable housing policy unless council commits either in the policy document or letter of intent to provide annual budget resources beginning in fiscal year 2014 to the Affordable Housing Fund. This commitment should average approximately $300,000 per year, as recommended by the task force. The policy correctly states providing affordable housing is a partnership effort among various key stakeholders, that includes city government, neighboring jurisdictions of Arlington and Fairfax, private sector developers, nonprofits, and recipients. Both Fairfax and Arlington provide county funding for construction, preservation, rental assistance, as well as first-time homebuyer assistance that represents one cent of real estate taxes, or some $300,000 in the case of the city. The policy also asks private sector developers, and therefore future residents of the city, to provide ADUs a minimum of 6 percent, or the equivalent in a financial contribution to the fund. However, city council is not willing to ask existing residents to contribute for affordable housing. The city budget contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund is needed for leveraging, attracting partners, and demonstrating the council's commitment to the goals and objective of its own affordable housing policy. Why the doubt of going forward? City council eliminated $300,000 from the task force proposal and would not commit any amount in the policy or other document. The city contributed budgetary resources only twice to the Affordable Housing Fund since its inception in 2001, for a total of $235,000. The proposed city budget for fiscal 2014 contains no city contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, and eliminates all city funding for the tenant-based rental assistance program, the only existing city-funded program for affordable housing. The message is clear. City council considers that affordable housing is important, is not important or priority enough to warrant investing any of the city's budget resources. Why should private developers, regional partners, or nonprofits partner with the city in affordable housing? In my opinion, the council's unwillingness to commit resources on a continuing basis erases any possibility of coming even close to reaching the policy metrics in preserving or creating affordable housing. As a result, the policy document will simply end up on city hall office shelves. My firm wish is that city council comes to an agreement and makes a viable annual budgetary contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, beginning in FY 2014. Thank you.
Very much. The next speaker slip that I have is Mr. Don Robust. Don?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here as co-chair of the Affordable Housing Task Force. I'm also here as a city resident. I believe that without a significant, sustainable financial commitment on the part of the city, as Mr. Ron just said, it's shelfware. Words are cheap. I've lived here for a while, and I've seen a lot of initiatives come and go, but if there's not money that's tied to it, why, I mean, the council's gone on record saying that they support a regional approach, but why would Arlington or Fairfax want to enter into any kind of collective housing development with us if every time there's something that comes up that we fight this same budgetary fiscal issue? They need to know, whether it be the private sector, regional partners, that we have resources that can be leveraged in the short term without the political fights that will inherently occur. And, I mean, I think we've resolved the issue of integrated versus separate housing. I think that the issue of how much should developers put into the pool is, I think, resolved, but it's this financial commitment that needs to be resolved, and the council needs to make a significant step forward, whether it's in the policy, whether it's one cent, half a cent, $50,000, if there's some algorithm that council wants to put together for it, whether it's in the policy or if it's in the supporting documentation, it needs to be done, or, as I say, it's shelfware. So, thank you.
Very much. The next speaker slip that I have is Julian Edrobe.
And who is that, please?
It's, I believe it's, I had some trouble reading the handwriting, but it's Julian, and I believe the last name is spelled E-D-R-O-B-E.
Edrobe, yes. Good evening, Mayor Baruch and council members. My name is Julio Edrobe, and I'm a House Commissioner, and I was part of the Affordable Policy Group, and I live here in the city, the 14th South Maple Avenue. When I joined this group of affordable housing, I have different questions, and one of the questions was how many people need really affordable housing, and what is the size of really the affordable need in the city, how many people work really in the city, and what the people want in terms of affordable housing, of affordability close to their jobs. So we start investigating with different resources, and we apply a survey to get a direct input from the people, and we collect 262 surveys, information from the people who lives, who work in the city, and we get information from the school system, from the Falls Church City Government, and from private businesses. And we gather important results. We get that 157 people is interested in living in affordable housing in the city. 63 percent of the people that we asked, they live more than five miles from the city, and 72 percent of the people that we got this survey spend more than one hour just in commute from home to work and vice versa. And when we question these people, 107 people from the city government, from the schools, and from the private businesses, right now, they want to live in the city. But this is not enough information, this was not enough information, so we got to project the numbers to the reality that we have in the city, and we need to find more numbers. And I found them. In the budget of the city, in the 2013 budget, I found that we have a workforce of 2,247 workers in the city, and this is just counting the school system, the government, and the 10 biggest employers in the city. But if we add other employers, I arrive to a number of 3,647 people that is considered daily population, and this is the people who eat, buy groceries, buy gas, work in the city. When we project the numbers from this survey, I arrive to these numbers. 60 percent of the people who work in the city live outside the city. We are talking about more than 2,100 people that is living outside the city, and they spend, as I mentioned before, more than one hour in, just in driving, spending in driving, and they live more than five miles from the city. If we have just 30 percent of these people, if they want to live in the city, we have more than 600 people as a target of affordable housing. That is a real number, and in the policy, we have a goal of 150 units in the next 10 years, so we are really short. And if we are short, how we can get to that point if we don't have the real resources to get to that point? So my position is this. The challenge is bigger than projected in our affordable policy, and definitely, there is a need for opening an opportunity for affordable housing. The policy, as I mentioned, advocates for increasing the current stock by 150 units by 2022, but right now, there is an interest, right now, of 107 people who wants to live in the city, according to the survey. So today, I'm speaking to recommend not to approve the policy unless that we commit to include in the policy the following task. I want to see a commitment from our leaders, not only governing from the present, but to the future, and bringing our city to levels that compare with neighboring jurisdictions. That is possible just with a really good policy that includes certain budgets. We cannot sit down on the table with other partners without nothing in our pockets. It is impossible. We need, second, to open all the possibilities to different types of housing. Scattered housing won't be sufficient to cover the need that we have in the next 10 years. We need to close the gap between median sales price in the city, which is $612,000, to a closer number for people who makes less than 80 percent of the area median income.
Mr. Edrobe, you've exceeded your time limit, sir.
You can wrap up, please.
Okay, I wrap up. So we need to work in housing partnerships all across the region, and that means taking the, talking with surrounding jurisdiction, community organizations, developers, and more important, talking to our workforce and daily population. I live here.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Those are all the public comments I have as far as speaker slips go. Did we receive any written comments, Ms. Pichel?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment and open it up for any council discussions before we take the vote. Counsel? Mr. Pepe?
Okay, now it's working. You know, it's interesting, because... You know, it's interesting, because this task force was created, and I think I was one of the ones who said a while back, we've got a lot of different policies, and a lot of different committees, and a lot of different housing things going on, and why can't we pull it together and make something clear? Because we spent a lot of time debating each single project that comes up, and what I was seeing was a pattern of people saying, "Well, I'm for affordable housing, but I'm against this project." "I'm for affordable housing, but I'm against this project." And it became absolutely clear, we had no guidance out there for what people had to bring to us that even had a chance of getting approved. So part of it was to pull together folks who would do the research about the needs assessment, because there was a debate about that, look at the best practices from around our jurisdiction and around the country, and I, first of all, want to thank the task force for doing that. I think they did what we asked them to do. They went out there and they looked at what the best practices were, they looked at a needs assessment and said, "Here are some recommendations." Now, I also know we have a history here of appointing task forces, and then when they come back and say what we don't want to hear sometimes, we turn around and say, "Well, that's not exactly what we meant." I don't know quite if the debate or the opposition of the recommendations here were because there are substantive agreements, or it's a just-we-can't-afford agreement. It might be a little bit of both. I think it's absolutely clear, though, after hearing the comments tonight, and they echo some of my concerns, that when you do things at the government level, if you don't attach funding to it, you can say all you want about how you support it and we're for it, but if you don't have some stream or something envisioned or some plan to get it paid for, it isn't going to.
And if I can just make one point of clarification for the purposes of the public and for Mr. Pepe. Mr. Pepe, I don't recall, I'm not sure if you were at the last work session where this was discussed, but there were some language changes made on page 12, line 56 of the actual policy. Over the course of the discussions, there was reservation of having a specific dollar amount associated with the policy. So the way it reads now is that the City Council should consider dedicating sustainable annual revenue, and part of that discussion was that's an item that should come up in discussions annually when we have that budget discussion. So that's just to try to summarize what happened at the work session last night.
So is that something being considered for this budget cycle since we're heading into it?
It can be.
Okay. That's the question.
It can be. So I think the sense was for the council was rather than trying to figure out what a number should be in a policy, figure it out during the budget process when we're looking at all the needs. That way, we're looking at it collectively, and one item that's clearly very important to the city is not getting ahead of every other need that we have. So I think that was sort of the sentiment at the work session. That's why we came up with the "should consider" language after much debate and discussion at the last work session, as I recalled it. Let's go to Vice Mayor Snyder and then Mr. Cal.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the citizens and staff for a lot of good work here, and I do think we're moving, we are moving forward on this. There is some background I want to provide, having chaired the Falls Church Housing Corporation for a while and having worked on these issues over the years. I do think this is a step forward, significant step forward. And the important thing is that we look at the total city commitment to affordable housing, and it really goes beyond this policy statement. We continue to provide tax exemption for the Falls Church Housing Corporation's properties. In the past, we've supported their administrative budget. We dedicate our Community Development Block grant funds to human services, which is something we're not obligated to do and which many municipalities do not do. We have dedicated staff, we have gained affordable units through our development policy. So I realize this isn't everything that people want right now, but I also realize that we are making a good faith effort and that this policy statement will extend that good faith effort into the future, along with a commitment to take up this issue in connection with the upcoming budget. Now that said, we have another affordability issue, which is raised by people who pay taxes and who say, "Because of tax increases that you, the City Council, are imposing, my house is less affordable to me." And particularly, people on fixed incomes are then seeing their tax money subsidize other people while their housing becomes more unaffordable to them. So in order to keep together, I think, a community consensus on this and to avoid a reaction that could jeopardize all of the city's affordable housing programs, I think this is a reasonable step forward, and I do think we're serious about continuing to consider affordable housing in our budgetary process, and we've committed to doing that. So that's why I'm supportive of this approach that we're taking. I appreciate Councilmember Duncan's work on this and the work of the other council members and staff, and I think we ought to move forward. Otherwise, we sit around debating the policy forever, and we're not going to move forward. And I do want to move forward. I do want to commit to getting some units in development projects that are before us now, and commit to looking at this in the budget context, and commit to continuing to do all the things that I've talked about that the city is already doing in affordable housing. And I also commit to working with our citizens in this group as we move forward in the future, and I'm sure you will be here to make sure that we live up to whatever we're saying tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. Mr. Cal?
Comments that I'm going to make are not related to the vote that I'm going to make, but to Mr. Pepe's comments, I have to say, that's right, there were people who would support affordable housing, but found that the particular transaction that was presented was not acceptable. And there are good reasons for that. It was not as it was implied, and inconsistency or contradiction. And there were others who really didn't have much of an opinion until after the election took place. The other issue is, if someone on this table could answer it, I'd be appreciative. If, we already know that the school board request is going to, if it's handled through a tax rate increase, will be in the order of 10 to 12 cents over the current tax rate. I would like to know if the people who would like to see something more substantive are prepared to add to that tax rate, or if they have an idea of where in the city's budget are we going to cut? Are we going to cut stormwater again? Are we going to cut public safety? Are we going to cut the library? I would like to know, after all the good feelings are and the hard decisions about who is going to have to take the cuts or the tax increases, and I think the point that Mr. Snyder has made is very important. There are a number of people who are on fixed income and on pensions, and for them, the tax rate increase will become extremely difficult, and they will run into issues of affordability, even if they own their own homes. Because there's one thing to have a $600,000 home, and it's something else to have the cash flow to pay for the taxes. These are very real issues that people have to face. So unless we have answers to the questions I posed just now about how we pay for this, this is an unavoidable situation, an unavoidable fact of the financial stress that the city of Falls Church is undergoing and will undergo for the next couple of years, and that's the way it is.
Councilmembers? I did, I have a question for staff. Mr. Shields, do you happen to know offhand as far as the approximate value of an ADU in our mixed-use projects, like the projects that we're seeing coming up? I know that we had the figures that were presented to the Economic Development Committee, the council.
The value in terms of the cost to the developer to offer them to the city?
Correct.
We had a memo that, I think in one of the earlier memos on this policy, we did have those numbers. And if I recall correctly, we calculated it to be about $180,000 to $200,000 per unit when they're proffered by a developer. I'm looking to Nancy if that's, my memory is correct on that.
And I'm going to look to Kevin, and I believe it was $170,000.
Thank you. And the point that I'm trying to make is that certainly voluntary contribution money that's coming from the developers in various projects that we're seeing, and that has real monetary value. So if we're talking about the commitment that this council has, part of the policy certainly goes to those issues, and as the council begins to take up projects outside of the budget cycle, I think that there is a commitment, because I think certainly the council in its work sessions has made it fairly clear to the developers that they would want to see the ADUs within the buildings. And that means that the council's not getting other benefits, or the community's not getting other benefits that are going to affordable housing. So I think, from what I've seen from this council so far, there has been a clear interest in essentially putting our money where our mouths are on some of the projects that we're seeing coming forward right now as a way of capitalizing the limited resources that we have. So I wanted to echo Vice Mayor Snyder's comments. He put them much more eloquently than I could this evening, but I do share his thoughts and what he said earlier. And I'll also mention that we do also have a commitment to the winter emergency shelter as well, and that's something that we funded, as far as I know, year in and year out.
Other councilmembers? All right, if I can have the roll call for vote, please.
On T O 12, there's 31, Council. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
And my personal thanks to all councilmembers. I know that this was a rather difficult one and took some time, and it was sausage making, but we got there, so thank you all.
Council, the next standing before you on first reading is T O 13-04, ordinance to amend Chapter 8, Article 6 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, private schools, special schools, and daycare facilities.
Council, this also is discussed at work session. In short, what this ordinance would do is mirror a recently adopted Fairfax County code change. Fairfax County, we contract with to perform these inspections in the city. We have eight childcare facilities specifically that would be regulated by this ordinance, and they've all been informed of these code changes. They've been part of the process up to this point, so we do not believe that any of these code changes will be a surprise to those childcare providers in the city. This ordinance is now before council on first reading, and staff is here to answer any questions about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Council, any questions? I know that we talked about this during the work session. If I can get a motion, and then I'll go ahead and open it up.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt T O 13-04 on first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for February 25, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
That's Vice Mayor Snyder on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Ms. Pechal, did we receive any written comments on this item? I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Council members, any comments or questions before we take a vote? And if I can just again ask, and I believe that this was part of the process, that staff reach out to the various childcare providers that would be affected and just make sure that they have an opportunity to comment, and I know that that's already happening, but if we can just emphasize that. Anything else, Council? All right. Ms. Pechal, if you could go ahead and call them. Roll, please.
On T O 13-04 on first reading, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The next standing before you on your consent, Mr. Shields?
Yes, and Council, we did have some comments from the public on, or at least one comment that I'm aware of, on this item, and so I'd recommend we pull this off consent so there can be some discussion on this item. It is a major appropriation. I've asked the planning, I mean, our Reckon Parks Director, Mr. Danny Schlitt, to be here to speak to the item, and we also have the Chair of the Reckon Parks Board, Mr. Charlie O'Hara. In brief, what the council's asked is to approve a contract in the amount of $181,337.26 to replace all of the equipment in Lincoln Park, replace the swings, picnic tables, benches, the tot play area, as well as the big children's play area. We do have a little bit more information on that if council has questions about it. This is pursuant to the park master plan for Lincoln Park, and there was a neighborhood information gathering session that the Reckon Parks Board held in December, and it is our recommendation that we move forward with this contract. We do think that this is a very visible park. It's also one of our most heavily used parks in the city and is worthy of a significant investment to make sure that it is a great place to be. As a smaller note, there are also some damaged play equipment, and Big Chimneys Park in this contract will allow us to fix that damaged equipment there as well. So that's a quick staff report. Again, we have experts here in the House if there are additional questions, and it might be worthwhile just to hear from them.
Well, we're pulling it off consent.
Yeah.
So it's for discussion, but we can vote on it if council wants to vote on it, or we can defer it. Given the Big Chimneys issue and that I live in proximity to Big Chimneys Park, I own property 243 Gundry Drive, but I can consider these matters fairly and objectively. Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
I had a question, I had two, actually. I am mindful of an article that was in the Washington Post today, you know where I'm going with this one, about the disagreement between the PTA and the school district on the safety of this particular set of equipment. I presume that that issue, you know, has been resolved and that all parties are speaking to each other, and that whatever equipment is chosen is appropriate from a public safety standpoint, et cetera. That was my question number one. And question number two, I was confused about this. Wasn't this equipment damaged by an accident, and how much of that insurance money is paying for this equipment?
It was. So that accelerated the park master plan implementation for this park because of that accident, and there is a portion of it that's being paid for out of insurance proceeds. It's not all of it. About $26,000 to $27,000 of it is going to be paid for out of insurance proceeds. The rest is being paid for through the capital budget. And so these funds are in the parks' budget for this year.
I'm sorry, so it's $181,000 plus 27, or $181,000 minus?
$181,000 is the total cost. $26,000 of that's being paid for out of insurance proceeds.
Other councilmembers? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you. I wonder if we could go through Mr. Pelton's comments one by one. He raises some pretty good points. He says that $181,000 is too much to spend for new equipment. What do you have to say about that?
The price breakdown, if you go through it, the purchase of the equipment is $117,000. The labor to take down the old and to install the new is $45,000. To put in the surfacing, $3,800, and then the shipping for the equipment is $14,000. I think in the Reckon Parks evaluation of this process, or of bringing in equipment to this site, because of its high visibility and because it is one of our most highly-used park, the desire was to have equipment that was really going to meet our needs and to make that investment. And so that's what this proposal does stand for. We do think that we're getting a very good product with this that befits a very heavily-used and highly-visible park.
Mayor, please, please. Just anecdotal comment, this is not in a formal study, but when I was campaigning a couple of years ago, I went precisely to Lincoln Park. I figured this could be a great place to gather a lot of residents in a short period of time. great place to gather a lot of residents in a short period of time. I must have tried 20 people. Two lived in the city. A quarter of them lived in Arlington and the remainder lived in Fairfax, but virtually nobody from Falls Church there was at that time. So while it may be a centerpiece, at least anecdotally, I have to tell you, it's hard to say exactly who's going to be the beneficiary of this. And I'm sure the two communities will lower their inter-jurisdictional cost requests because of our kindness in providing a fully operational park. But in any event, that's just anecdotal. I'm going to just throw that out for a little bit of side commentary. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Snyder, do you have anything? Mr. Duncan?
Anecdotally, I just wanted to say, back when the world was young, I used to go there with my kids and, you know, I usually would see neighbors. I don't know that we have, do we have a census of use of facilities like this? I mean, absent such a thing, maybe this is part of our regional, you know, playground initiative that's, you know, we're doing our part to promote recreation. But we should talk about the specific dollar questions because Eric's questions are serious, and he's a serious guy, so we should get good answers for him. I agree with Mr. Snyder. Keep it up.
Other council members?
I wonder if maybe we could actually see the drawings. You have, I think, drawings and photographs, if that would be all right to maybe see what?
Yeah, I think that's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Tarter.
Yeah, I can tell you a little bit. We don't have any kind of numbers that tell us who are in the parks and things like that. But I will say that Mr. Shields is absolutely right in that this is one of our most popular parks, but more importantly, it's probably one of our most popular playgrounds. And a big reason behind that is, is because of the fact that it's totally fenced in, and it offers that piece of safety for the young toddlers. And because of its smallness, it has the two major playground pieces in that one is for the toddlers and the one for the, excuse me, for the next age group up. But the drawings itself, as of right now...
You need a holder? You want to be a holder?
And really what we're talking about doing is, and through work that the Advisory Board has done over time, is we're going to go in and we're going to replace the old with new. And as Mr. Shields noted, we're going to replace everything. We're going to go in and replace all the amenities in the park. One thing that we went back and forth with for months leading up to this project being picked by accident, and I mean that because of the situation that happened, was which park to start in, or should we start piece by piece when we started going into these parks and getting into some of the playground equipment. This came along and gave us an opportunity to not only do something that we've done before, but also gave us an opportunity with some of the reimbursement because of the insurance monies and stuff, to put ourselves in a position to have a park that people always come to staff and say, you know, "We really like your parks, but you should go to the one over in Arlington that has this or that." And there was a lot of questions from folks over time when we were going to potentially get into a situation where we could do something more than monkey bars and a couple slides. And this does have a bit of an upgrade to it in the fact that it is a themed pieces to it. And it's going to be a naturally themed process. And with it, the piece that was damaged is the largest piece in the middle of this drawing, and it will be taken out. And it was more metal and bars, and it had a great purpose over time. With the new tree fort theme, it's going to be there. And then it's going to have these crawl-throughs, as well as this toddler piece that comes with this little tree fort that goes over that. The tables in the park that are currently, the wooden green tables, are going to become mushrooms with little mushroom stools. And the other amenities are the swing sets that are no longer really meeting ADA compliance are going to be, come into ADA compliance, but they're also going to be a tree as the piece. All the surfacing and all the other work, the components, I think, as Mr. Shields mentioned, add to that price tag. But it gives us an opportunity to really put together the one thing that staff and the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks has been looking at doing for several years.
Yeah, if I could, I think also you're going to be addressing some flooding issues there as well, aren't you?
Well, some of the work that's already gone on over there as far as the rain garden work has taken some of the water that's coming off of the neighborhood just above the park. Some of the other work that has to be done is still in the works. We haven't come up with the perfect solution yet. And really, one of the recommendations, or the only real solution over there right now, according to the city staff engineers, is actually to lower the streets because of the water issues. As most of you know, most of our parks are in low lying areas, and there are water issues. I think a lot of the water issues have been addressed, and we will continue to do so, but we don't have anything that's going to guarantee that our water issues will be completely done.
Other council members? Danny, I have a question for you. Based on your experience in replacing equipment, is this generally in line with the costs associated with replacing equipment of this sort for this size of park?
It is. And here's one of the major pieces that we deal with as a government agency in having public open parks, is that we have ADA requirements. And a lot of the equipment we have out in a lot of our parks do not necessarily meet current ADA compliance pieces. Playground equipment is expensive. It always has been, and it continues to be so. But to answer your question in short, yes, this is a bit of an upgrade from just going in and replacing the bars and the slides to what we've gone through in our December Advisory Board meeting and meetings previous to that with the Advisory Board and the public.
Other questions? Mr. Pepe?
See if today's on this time. I'll make a quick comment. Over my many years on school boards, you know, this was always an issue about what it costs to put in decent playground equipment. This is in line. I've seen the average cost at... And, you know, at schools, it actually can be a lot more than that. And it looks like you're leveraging some of the city labor you have to keep the cost down compared to what some of these things I've seen going for. It is always a challenge because people will come in and say, "I can put in monkey bars, and I can put in a swing set, and look what it costs me to go do it." But you're correct, when you factor in the ADA and the liability angle, which the manufacturers build into these prices, like it or not, because of all the people like us lawyers sitting up here, there is a bit of a premium when you're doing something like this in a park area, but it's generally in line if you want to have a nice quality. I mean, I think the threshold issue is, does the city want to invest in a quality playground like this or something less? Now, there was a trend in the '70s and the '80s where they got away from this and did very minimalist stuff. And all that stuff, they then had to pay to haul away because it ended up being between the splinters and the wood decaying. There's also a product lifecycle cost involved, and this appears to be some of the equipment that's actually going to last. So that's, there's another factor there to look at with it.
One other question. Mr. Shields, and this is already, the funding is already available. This is the actual authorization. So it's in the budget request that previously occurred and on the capital improvements project. This was already programmed in?
That is correct. So this is the 2012 plus the 2013 CIP funds.
So this is not a request for a plus up?
No.
It's just authorization to actually spend the contract or utilize the money to put in the contract. And there is...
As part of the Master Park Improvement Plan money, and that's what this is coming from.
And there is a course and a plan for various parks throughout the city. My understanding is this opportunity kind of came up because of the, some of the damage that was done.
That's correct. There's a lot of projects that staff and the Advisory Board have discussed, from the court surfaces to park signage and things like that. There is not currently another project to go in and replace all of the playground equipment, but there's many projects in line. And I think in your most recent council retreat, there was a line by line of what we're currently planning on doing with our CIP monies. And this is in line with that, and it didn't change any of those priorities. And we're still in line with the current money that we have already funded to go in and do those pieces that we had talked about.
Thank you, Danny. And just when we speak anecdotally, you know, as I campaigned and talked to friends in neighborhoods who have, you know, toddlers and kids, and one comment I do receive is that, you know, our parks are lacking. So we do have a lot of residents who visit other jurisdictions. And the message that I get is, "Why don't we have parks like Arlington?" Apparently Arlington has some great, great parks and amenities for our youngest citizens. So something that I've often said, I think we need those amenities here in Falls Church as well. So I'm supportive of any of you bringing in other opportunities. We're going to be on the heels of a budget season. You know, it's not the time and place to discuss that, but, you know, you've heard me talk about our need to work on. Our infrastructure in parks are something that are extremely important to a community like ours, to have that village feel that we talk about, especially as we're starting to see more development coming forward. I think it is really important that we consider that. So I'll leave you with that thought. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just a quick question. Does this have the support of the Advisory Board, Mr. O'Hara? I wondered, one of our leading citizens and advocates for open space and parks.
Thank you for those kind words. It does. We do not receive a lot of money. We haven't in the last five years for Master Park Improvement Plans. We've done all the Master Park, the master plans over the last 10 years. They've all been sitting there waiting to have money allocated to implement. So it's not lightly that we allocate a huge chunk of our master plan improvements for the last two fiscal years to this project. But we have a situation that occurred with the accident. Something needed to be done, and Danny was forward-thinking and said, "Okay, we have to replace that piece. Why don't we look at the overall feel and development of that park?" So we developed a theme plan, and we think it works. Not only is that one of the most used parks, it's also one of the most visible parks we have, being on the corner of Lincoln and Great Falls. You look at a lot of our other parks, Roberts, Big Chimneys, or a lot of, or further back, you're not going to see their playground equipment. Berman Park, this is one that I think is worth as a gateway to the city, to have something that looks nice and is also very functionable, both for the needs of the younger kids and the middle-aged kids in the city. And yes, it has the full support of the Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, Charlie, why are you there? Again, thanks for your hard work on these issues. Am I correct that there is a school board member that is part of the advisory?
That is correct.
Was there any feedback from the school board on this project?
Nothing other than, as I recall, trying to recall whether Greg was there at that meeting. There was no official comment from the school board on this project, other than Greg was there at the meeting and I think was supportive of it from my recollection. It had the full support of the entire board. I don't believe there's anybody who abstained or voted no as to this project.
Other comments and questions?
I would just like to add, echo maybe some of the earlier comments. I think it's about time that we've upgraded some of our parks and playground equipment with fairly, three fairly young children, a pretty heavy consumer of parks in the area. And I think it's about time that we upgrade our equipment to the modern era. You know, there's a lot of stuff that's happened in the past 20 years, 30 years in playground, you know, technology or whatever you might want to call it. And our neighbors are doing it. Arlington has got some really great parks. I think a lot of people in Falls Church actually drive to Arlington to use their parks. And I think it's, let's bring everybody back home and use what we got here. So I applaud it, and I thank you guys. I've been at some of the meetings, and I know you've spent a lot of time thinking about the different equipment that would go in and how this park could be utilized. And it was, it was a very thoughtful process, so I appreciate that. So, thanks very much.
Other council members? All right, if I can, I don't believe that we have a motion on this, so if I can get a motion, and the motion would be the proposed motion as it's drafted. We can consider it later, or we can vote on it now.
I mean, I...
If we need a motion, do we decide to do a motion?
All right, I'll make one. I move to adopt, where is this here? All right, well, let's find that with all these papers here. Let's see. Okay, I move to authorize the city manager to award a contract to Game Time CEO, Cara of Cunningham Recreation for playground equipment purchase and installation in the amount of $181,337.26.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Duncan? Any further discussion? Let me go ahead and open this item up for public comment.
This will affect my vote. I would have preferred to have more discussion on this matter. Thank you.
I'd like to open this item up for public comment. I don't have any speaker slips, but we did receive one comment that I believe Ms. Bishow summarized earlier. That was the comment from Mr. Eric Pelton. Not seeing any other comments, I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Any parting shots before we take the vote, Council? Ms. Bishow, if you'd call the roll?
On the playground equipment contracts, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Sting.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The next item on consent is TR 13-01. It's the appointment of Councilmember Joanna Berry to serve as the City of Falls Church representative on the Potomac Watershed Roundtable for a three-year term of January 2013 through December 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TR 13-01, appointment of Councilmember Joanna Berry to serve as the City of Falls Church representative on the Potomac Watershed Roundtable for a three-year term of January 2013 through December 2015.
If I can get a second? It's Mr. Tarter on the second. If I can have the roll call votes, and this was on consent.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Yeah, do you really want to do this? Mr. Duncan?
She says yes, I say yes.
Okay, Mr. Duncan says yes. Mr. Kalin?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Pepe?
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
All right, we are on to the minutes. Council, any comments on the minutes? Ms. Berry?
I gave Ms. Bishow some corrections on the minutes. They were typos, but in an email exchange with Ms. Bishow, I wanted to clarify a misstatement I made last week. The language was clear in the work session, but not in the council meeting. On the topic of the school's safety fence, I intended to say that council had asked for a memo from the police department ratifying or supporting the school's request. But the minutes show is that I asked for a memo from council. Council was not asked to provide a memo. We asked that the first responders ratify the school request. Mr. Shields responded accordingly to my request, so it was understood internally, but I did want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Other council members, anything else on the minutes? If I can get a motion on the minutes, please?
Mayor, I move to adopt the minutes as amended.
And this would be the January 20th, 2013?
I'm sorry, January 22nd, 25.
28.
28.
January 28.
28, January 28, 2013.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Mr. Duncan on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
One abstention.
It's Mr. Snyder on the abstention. And I think that takes us through the agenda except on council member comments, which I skipped over. I apologize, Council. Mr. Duncan, or I'm sorry, Mr. Kalin?
Just to add, I should have said it before, but the way this developed was a little bit quicker than I was able to respond. The reason for the abstention was that it just the juxtaposition of the affordable housing people who made a heartfelt plea for resources that we don't have. Now, I realize that we have the money that was authorized for this expenditure, but it would almost seem like...
it would almost seem like this is more important than meeting our affordable housing requirements. Now, I know they're not exactly measurable, but it just happened to be the juxtaposition of the two, which is what, I wanted a little bit more time to sort of process it and think about it. But it's not that I think it's a bad idea. It's just, as I say, it's just the way we're making our decisions, and it's going to, it's just a very rugged and uneven process.
Other council members? And just to follow up on that, I hear you, Mr. Kalin, but, you know, in my view, this was money that was already allocated, so it was just on a contract issue. So I don't, I would have felt differently had this been a request for a plus-up or some enhancement to a budget that hadn't been approved. No, I understand, but I felt that I needed to clarify my view of why I voted in favor of it. It's because all we were doing is authorizing a contract. We'd had the budget deliberation about this issue in the normal course. Mr. Duncan?
I appreciate that comment. I agree with you. On a separate matter, I want to thank the manager for the response to the request at our last meeting for traffic counts from Broad Street. Citizen had written into the news press, I believe, stating, asking if traffic volumes had not gone up significantly on Broad Street. And manager sent a memo which shows historic traffic counts on Broad Street in four locations, going back to 2002, that show that traffic volumes have been generally consistent along Broad Street for the past decade, which is interesting. I really didn't know what we were going to find when it was asked, but it was, for instance, $33,000 in 2002, and $34,000 in 2011, $27,000, $28,000, and in two instances, the same counts from 2002 to 2011. I just think that's useful information for people to know. I mean, it's not to say, obviously, that we don't have issues, congestion on Broad Street, particularly in certain locations, but when we're doing economic development, we often do hear that, you know, the traffic is just getting worse and worse and worse. And these traffic counters, I don't think lie, so they indicate that there is some progress that we're making by creating a more walkable city, getting people out of their cars, to metro, whatever. Anyway, I just wanted to thank the manager for his response to my query.
Okay. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just note that a couple of us were able to participate in the TED ceremonies yesterday. There was a good turnout from the city's staff as well, the police chief and Tom Polera, and it was a wonderful, wonderful occasion, and it just, I think, underscores the richness of this community, that we all have the opportunity to serve. And I do think that we all, just to further comment on Councilmember Kalin, we've all worked very, very hard on the affordable housing policy. I think we all want to do what we can do. We all will. And in fact, the city is doing a fair amount on it as we work through development projects and elsewhere. So it may not be enough in some people's minds, but I think we're committed to continue to work on it, but recognize, too, that the city has obligations that are in other areas as well. Thank you.
Council members? Ms. Berry?
And on a lighter note, I'd like to be one of the first council members to wish Mr. Abraham Lincoln and Mr. Charles Darwin a happy birthday tomorrow. Yeah.
Other council members?
I should say, close to home. My father's 89th birthday is today, and I would like the record to say, to show that instead of calling my dad at home, I'm here at city council. I might get home in time to call. Oh, yeah, we're early. Anyway, happy 89th birthday.
Happy birthday to your father.
Some of you met my father at our swearing-in. He'll last a lot longer than I will. That'll make you happy. Exactly. I'll ask, where did I go wrong?
All right. Other council members? And then just echoing Vice Mayor Snyder's comments on the TED festivals at the Eden Center, it was an absolutely great event. It was, in fact, so successful that yours truly, the mayor, who was supposed to make some comments, couldn't find parking. So Vice Mayor Snyder did, from what I understand, a great job filling it. But literally, it was completely filled to the gills and capacity, and parking in the streets in adjacent areas were filled. Well, let's just say that there was overspill in other areas, which made me think I probably should not park in another lot, so, which I did not do. But it was a great event, and the restaurants were absolutely packed. So the numbers in the last few years, I think that that event has become more and more successful every year. So great to be able to participate in that. All right, anything else? All right. If I can get a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you. That's Mr. Kalin and Mr. Duncan. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you, council. And council, we are meeting a week from tomorrow because of the holiday.